Several things, well I say several things, we have one thing on the agenda. The theory is all of the malls have joined us or insured, but that looks really nice. I like it. Anyway, we are live for our Facebook session. This is going to be work session in preparation for our July the 5th meeting, which by the way is the fourth is our normal Tuesdays, and since it is a holiday, it will mean we will be July the 5th at 5:30. So this is our work session in preparation for that, and part of that today, we usually have presentations, and today we have sports facilities management, sports facilities companies have come to visit with us. We have some folks from out of town who are going to be introduced by Mr. Doherty, who's our general manager of Parks and Recs, so I'm going to turn it over to him and let him proceed.
So we have Mr. Kelly, who is our head of operations for all SFC. So he's here today. Mr. Cole, who is our GM, or our AE, sorry, home executive for Starfield, and our sales is Greg, who's our former.
And they have said that they are all open for questions if anybody has some, so I'll just put y'all on the hook right back.
Sure, absolutely. So we're going to go through a little bit of a business plan and operations update for a certain moment. Table of contents, one of my favorite pictures of Starfield right there is the downtown area. So I'm not going to go into all the details of the executive summary, but there's a lot of great information in there about the things that we've been doing in this community. And one of the things that we are needing to do is grow, expand, provide safe environments, and we've done those. We've also been great stewards of the financials. So here, in this one, is the goals that we set forth last year, and how we went about achieving those. So we've monitored, we've managed, we've collected data, we've reached out to the community, we've been part of the community, we've increased sponsors and sponsorships, we've partnered with numerous organizations. So we have seen a lot of success, and we're going to go into those details a little bit later in this slide. This is a year in review, this is just a bit of the review. We know that this year's been a bit of up and down. The delay at Cornerstone has hampered us in some areas, but has provided opportunities in others. As we had to pivot away from the cornerstone because of the delays of opening, we were able to focus on expanding our programs, getting more engagement into the community, improving our communication, increasing our social media outreach. Those things have been substantially important for our growth, and at the end of the year though, we've done really well. We've achieved some amazing records, we have extremely high participation, we've reached a thousand people more than we did previous year. We had roughly 2,000 people last year, this year we have 3,000 people, and we've done that in three quarters and not four, so we still have the rest of the summer. We've increased the number of rentals this year, we've increased the average rate per rental, so with more rentals, we've rented more days, which increased it. Community program, we've increased 158% over 3,000 participants this year. That means that we've added more programs and more opportunities. Our marketing and our outreach has been substantial, and because of the community engagement, we've been able to get more participation. We offer nine youth leagues and adult leagues, we've had 17 separate citywide projects or events, and we started four new programs. Our opportunity is, is now with Cornerstone on the horizon, we're going to be looking at doing 10Ks and 5Ks, we're going to be looking at the pickleball community and being able to engage more, because we haven't done much with that. We're also starting our soccer rec plus program, along with a number of different competitive programs that are specifically meant for those kids who want to be competitive and not just practice.
Go back, before you leave that slide, you've got obstacles, let's talk about your obstacles.
Referees and umpires. So the challenge is, is as we grow, we have more teams, we have more active games every night, we don't have a surplus of referees and umpires. We've been reaching out to the university and trying to figure out a way, we put on a school of our own to provide them the knowledge to train them to be umpires and referees. We need them in place, they need to be strong, because if they're not strong, games will get away and parents will become out of control. So we need them to be able to control that environment to ensure that it's safe. So we have had to fill in numerous times throughout the year to do this. We're really trying to expand that and find other people to come and do that for us.
Does that also extend to coaches? Do you have enough coaches for?
So the coaches, we do have a hard time with on some sports. We have parents who want to be a coach, but it doesn't mean that they are a coach. And so this year, what we're doing is, we're actually developing a coach's guide to show them how to do practices, how to facilitate the communication to the team, and how to do kind of the A to Z stuff. And we're going to try to do that so that parents can be better coaches, and then hopefully maybe that is something that the coaches can also become better themselves. So generally speaking, we get parents to step up, but they aren't necessarily coaches. And then we have the timing of activities. We have a very tight window of time because we have limited areas to participate in. Sportsplex, the gymnasium is an example, we only have so much time in a day that we can hold a sport. So like January through March, basically is basketball, because we can't do much else in the evening times. And so if we wanted to add additional programming in there at night, such as volleyball, which is the prime time, we can't do that, because we just don't have the facility space to do it. So we have to be creative in moving those things around. Opportunity of partnering with the university, or local schools, but a lot of the local schools are willing to partner at a cost, it costs us money. And then parents don't really want to travel between two or three different facilities for their kids who are participating in the same night, they want it kind of in the same area. So these are some of the obstacles that we have to work through. It's a good problem to have, because that means our programs are a loss, and we're going to work through those.
For the usable space, the gym divider, does that, that's offered that as an opportunity to expand a little bit, hasn't it?
Yes, the gym divider is going to give us the opportunity, end of hours, that we can do two things at once, absolutely. So we can do volleyball practice on one side while we're still doing basketball practice on the other, or vice versa. Also allows us to do things during the day with kids and tumbling, it separates them off from the adults, creates a bit of a separation. But when we get into the actual program piece of youth sports, or even bigger events, the gym is a great example, we just don't have the capacity to grow in certain areas. And until we get another gym or a bigger space, we're going to end up probably seeing this year, next year, we're capped out, so. Food and beverage, it's been a pretty good year for food and beverage. Food and beverage, we do concession stands at all our league nights, and we also do the tournaments on the weekends. League nights have seen substantial growth. The first year was last year, we did it, a very low amount of money that we were generating per night, and we've basically doubled that this last year. And why is that? Consistency, quality of food, and the ability to be open during the event and marketing that to people so they come in and spend their money. Obviously, there's ebbs and flows, but with the investment of the equipment and the employees, we've definitely seen a turnaround. Concessions for the tournaments has not been as good as we hoped, and that's primarily because we haven't had the tournaments. When the tournaments are executed, we see a huge return, but we got to get the tournaments to give the return. So financially, the budget will show that we don't have as much food and beverage revenue, but that's primarily because of the delay of opening of course.
I wanted to just say that I went to the first tournament out at Cornerstone, and so I was asking lots of people what they liked, didn't like, asked one little boy, one young player, what his favorite part of it all was, and he said, "The food trailers."
So we've gotten a lot of positive.
So that's been a real plus.
Yeah, the food trailers are great, and the concept is great. Our plan, again, as this has been delayed, is how do we maximize the usage of those trailers? We've decided that what we're going to do is start working with community events and taking those trailers to supplement any type of food and beverage revenue that we might have lost this year. So for instance, when we have Bulldog Bash, we're going to take the trailers and set up to try to do some selling, so that we can, one, brand ourselves into the community, connect to the community, and then on top of that, help supplement some of the lost revenue we've had this year. So we're doing that across every aspect of this community. We're going to use those trailers as truly multi-trailsers, so. This is a great picture, it's a collage of photos just to show you the different things that we do all year long. We impact everybody. We create smiles, we create experiences. It's what we do and what we appreciate. Our operational team, so we have five managers, we have an ops manager, a finance manager, a marketing manager, food and beverage, and a park maintenance manager, and these are those leaders on our team that basically facilitate the day-to-day operations of what we do. We have 22 full-time employees, 38 part-time employees, and we've seen roughly 78% growth this year. That means that we have hired quite a few people in anticipation of Cornerstone being open, and all of the other things that we're doing, and they've carried that load forward throughout the year. We do feel that the full-time staff is pretty solid, we do have a few spots we need to kind of firm up a bit, but our part-time staff is going to be revolving. We do think we're going to have another 15, 15 to 20 positions in part-time. So these are all positions that are actually employed by people of our community. So again, all the money that we're getting in, we're giving back, and we're supporting the community by having these positions. I believe originally, we thought it would be about 50, but I think we're going to be upwards in the 70s, 70s, so. Marketing, we've seen a huge trend in our marketing, it's been a huge push for us this year. Here's a list of, not all, but many of our sponsors. We cannot thank all the sponsors enough for their support. 94% of all teams that go through our rec program are sponsored by somebody in our community. 94%. That means our community is so giving and taking care of our youth that it's absolutely amazing, and so we appreciate that and want to say thank you. Our big name sponsors for fields at Cornerstone and Sportsplex, we have almost all of those fields sold, I believe there's only one field left at Cornerstone to be sold, there's one plaza to be sold, and all the rest of the fields at the Sportsplex have been sponsored. So we've made a lot of strides in our sponsorship. We've also automated, and one of the big reasons we automate is because automation helps reduce the cost in a lot of ways. It allows us to process a larger volume of things, and then actually, it's a great cost avoidance. Civic rec, we do online registrations with that, we do online reservations with that. So that has been a huge tool for us to manage to help create a better customer experience, but it also allows us to track more efficiently in real time what we're doing and how we're doing it. We have alarm.com, which is a key fob system, so we have over 60 doors that have key fobs on them that allow us to give access or take access away. This is important because security is a big deal to us, and when we give out keys to staff or people, we have a hard time getting those back. Now with the key fobs that we give them, we can turn that off and it only costs us a dollar, so we don't have to be cord altered in doors. Clover is the state-of-the-art finance piece for food and beverage. Clover does inventory, which is super important, this cost of goods. It allows us to track our food and beverage revenue to ensure, are we charging enough, are we not charging enough? With over 10,000 transactions that we've had this year, we can basically pick out our top sellers, our worst sellers, our inventory levels, all the things that are important to find ways to reduce the waste. So Clover is fantastic. And then, again, periwether is a safety, it's weather safety. We want to make sure that we execute the tournament and make sure everyone's safe, mitigate any type of incidences, and so we use that on a wide scale for mass notifications. As you all know, we're heavy into the projects, so we have tons of capital projects going. We know Cornerstone, but we also know that the Travis softball center, we resurfaced the wooden floors, we had some addition of a gym divider, and we had some repairs done to the roof this last year, which actually paid off this last week when we had the rain. It did not damage the floor, so that's a good thing. The pool, we have been extensively working on the pool with the roof, the fiberglass, the plumbing, and the wall. So the pool is actually operating very well, and those repairs that we did have reduced our water usage by nearly 60% now. So our water bill has substantially gone down since those repairs this year. We have replaced numerous parts on playgrounds, we've provided new mulch for fall, we've done a number of springs, and we've installed at least six different ADA access points so that we can use those for all people. We have the use of all people who use those. Other park projects, currently we're working on pickleball courts, we have the huge McKee Park project with the splash pad in the playground, we have the JL King Park with the lights, which is currently going on, bathrooms and splash pad, H3's Park with parking and bathrooms, and then the Sportsplex drainage is a multi-phase project also. So we are geared, supporting all the capital improvements, investments into this, managing it, monitoring it, and making sure that we can efficiently and effectively use it. The calendar is probably the newest thing that you'll see from us. The calendar here, this is all the activities and important dates for us this year. This is what we're doing. This is about 30% bigger than what we did last year. Our engagement level is higher, our activities are higher, we have some new programs going on. This is our attempt to provide this to the community so we can do a few different things. One, we want to make sure the community knows what we're doing and when we're doing it. We want to make sure that we market to it, and if there's something that's not on this that we should be doing, we want people to reach out and say, "Hey, maybe you should try that," because we want to try that, because it might be something that might be the next pitch run. So we will be publishing this calendar along with some of the sub material to help our community be active, so.
I have a question. The splash pad opens on the 31st of October, that would be, the splash pad closes on the 31st of October, would it not?
It would.
Okay. And then, yeah, and then under 2024, on April 2024, splash pad should open, right, as opposed to close?
Yeah, they're reversed.
Okay, so they're reversed. Just making sure I was understanding, before we publish it.
Winter splash pad program.
Okay, well, you know, given the heat we've got out here, you may be able to do it year-round, but anyway, I just wanted to make sure before we publish that we are clear on our.
We'll make those changes.
All right, thank you very much.
So now I'd like to ask if you guys have any questions about some information, things that we can do, or questions for.
Well, I think you ought to tell the story that you told me a little bit earlier today, and Aldrin Beatty should be interested in this, as it relates to the lifeguard success that you had. Now, we, for a while there, we couldn't open because we didn't have lifeguards, so share the.
So as we know that we couldn't open on time because we didn't have enough lifeguards, and so we went to social media and used a number of different avenues. The biggest one was engaging the community in the need of lifeguards. In that, we received nearly 45 applications over 10 days. Out of those individuals, we had to provide a test, a class for them to get certified. Out of that, 20 of them were certified, and now we have so many lifeguards, we are a bit over stacked. But the good news is, is that what we realized is, is that there is a big support or a big market, or there's a better way to market the jobs that we need to support Parks and Recs, and we need to look at that, because the way the community responded to our need for us to have this pool open demonstrates that it's there. And again, we're always collecting information and trying to improve, this is an opportunity for us to improve on that.
Oh, that's a great story, because it does show community involvement, community interest, and responsiveness, and that there are probably many ways that we are yet to do, all that we need to do to get the community engaged, so I think that's great. And you also have some data numbers for pool usage, you're right?
Yep, so right now, we're averaging just over 86 people a day, and our hours have shifted a bit, but the, it's almost double per day at this point, and our memberships have exceeded what they were last year, so I do believe by the end of this month, in a few days here, we'll see if they actually meet the same standard or exceeded from this year. So the revenue is up in the pool, participation's up in the pool, and again, that's because we've been able to reach the people, the community, and market it, and try to fundamentally make it fun for them. Our swim lessons last year had about 36 kids in total, this year, we're probably around 70 kids in our swim lessons this year. So the pool's seen a lot of success, and that's primarily because the way the community has rallied around and tried to support the pool and keep it, keep it moving forward in the right direction, so.
I think that's great, and I'm glad to hear it, and capturing that data makes all the difference.
It really does, and a lot of the tools that we use are data-driven decisions, and we're doing that because we want to maximize the community's funds. And without the data, it's just my opinion, with the data, it's actually a business that's for the community. And now that we've automated ourselves over the last two years, and we're starting to collect it in the facilities, in the fields, we can start making better decisions moving forward.
Okay, I think that's great. Any questions, Mr. Doherty, or?
When will the Sportsplex be completely finished with the divider and the floors?
So we had a bit of a delay with the divider, the stage removal and the concrete was kind of hanging that up. We're currently trying to get the electrical and the roof completed. Once that's done, we're going to open the gym up, and so then when they arrive to actually install the divider, we'll shut it back down for a couple of days, but we think that next week or year.
Cool. Okay, anyone else? Any other questions? Gentlemen, anything y'all want to add to any of that?
I just want to say it's my first time in Starfield. I come, I come to you, by the way, of Chicago, so I apologize for my accent. I did 30 years in government, I served three mayors, I was the head of the Chicago Park District for over a decade, I was National Chair of the Board, so I'm, my sweet spot is government parks, this is my passion. Got a quick tour, I haven't seen Cornerstone, I'm going to see that after here, but you got a very capable leader here in Brandon, and if there's anything I can do or SFC can do to help, don't hesitate. I'll even give you my contact information, Brandon, can you send it in, shoot me an email or a phone call, this is my passion, that's what I like doing, so.
Okay.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
You're a Chicago City boarder?
No, I was the, so in Chicago, park systems are independent, so I ran the Chicago Park District, we were a $500 million company, in and unto ourselves, separate company body of seven member boards, so I was the CEO, I was not on the board.
Did you receive city funding?
The short answer is yes, but not, so we were property tax-based, our funding came from same taxpayers, and then we would get city funding through TIF increments or other types of grants, but we paid, we paid the largest water bill at the city of Chicago too, so it was a give and take on the way money flowed back and forth. It was mostly a friendly situation, but.
Were the museums included in your?
Yes, yes, so we had, our inventory in short was 605 parks, 26 miles of lakefront, 7,500 marinas, 12 museums, a zoo, six golf courses, Soldier Field, so the Chicago Bears were our tenant, we are the largest provider of outdoor entertainment. We were in the program business, so we did about 100,000 kids a quarter directly, another 100,000 partnership. Trying to think what else, the NASCAR race is going to all be in Chicago's parks this weekend. It's, it's a city within a city, 7,500 employees, so.
Well, and we appreciate what y'all are doing, because I think professionalism was what, was what we were asking for, and I think that's what we're getting, and I think we're getting a high level of interest, and I love the fact that the community is highly engaged and that we are almost beyond our capacity to manage it, we've got so much participation, which I think is.
Manager, that's the worst.
Almost, I said almost, I said almost. And Cody, I'm about to put you on the spot here real quick, and I'm sorry, I probably should have warned you ahead of time, as it relates to the soccer fields and managing that drainage, what's our timeline on that, please?
We have got, we've got a plan to fix the issues, more or less, most of the ones are a little higher than they need to be, so we think we can lower them in grade to drain to. So Stephen's been helping with this, he's doing a good job, we're more or less going to be able to lower those, so instead of trying to get it and just demolish and cut them, we're going to reorder risers that are shorter, a really clean process, he's getting quotes for those, I think this week, hope to have the materials in a couple of weeks, and then Chris Black thinks they can put them in, no problems, proceed, about one a day. So the plan is to come in, get the worst ones right there where everybody sits, see how it goes, and then start getting the ones in the back, so surely hope to beat soccer season.
Well, I know that we've got other things that are impacted by getting that drainage done, because we've got to aerate the fields and all that sort of business, so we do need to make sure that they've gotten enough lead time to make those fields.
I'm actually, I'm pretty dirty now, because we were out there this morning looking at it.
Okay, well, good.
We've got the ball in motion, and it's made a pretty good amount of progress over the past few weeks.
Okay, all right. Sam?
I wanted to ask a real quick question, and looking over this, it mentions lacrosse.
Yep.
So how, that's new for all of us.
So lacrosse is a very popular sport in the mountains, and it's kind of soccer and hockey mixed together, but MSU has a lacrosse club, and so they would come out to the fields And so, they would come out to the fields and set up their goals and have scrimmages and place some games. And then I have just naturally been able to kind of use that as our launching pad to try to get other people to come out here and play. It is a very heavy sport when it comes to equipment, but MSU's club group has worked with us to try to get these kids an experience while they're out there, to try to expand that sport. So, it's been really an interesting addition.
And I, I think one of the things that we would really like to do is tie in with the NIL stuff, so that the kids that come out to play some of our sports, we can get with the youth, the athletes out at the university and Mr. Winfield with the Bulldog in Mission Inn.
Yep.
And partner with them so that the kids will have that other experience that comes with the university tying in, so.
Absolutely, we definitely work with NIL, get that, try to personally come up.
Cool, all right. Any other questions? Yes, sir.
I just want to give them some props while I'm here.
Oh, well.
Thanks for working with the pickleball folks. They were, they're pleased that you, Big Lou wrote a sketch of how he wants the courts laid out, and we met yesterday, but I appreciate your willingness to, to look at that. We had twenty-five folks at the storm shelter today, so I, you know, it's, they're chomping at the bit to get the tournaments going and...
Yep. So, I mean, it's really exciting. I've never seen so much growth in a small community like this with additional programs and facilities and investment in infrastructure. I mean, it really goes to everybody in this room, in this community, about how important it is for us to give back and maintain the grassroots programming of our community. I mean, without your guys' support, we wouldn't be able to do this. And so, I mean, I appreciate it, thank you, but we thank you for all the stuff that you guys are doing and how you're investing into it.
Okay, all right. Anyone else? Any other questions? All right, well, take these guys out to Cornerstone, and y'all enjoy.
Yeah, we're going to walk around for our next half hour, so if anyone wants to...
In the heat, no less. Might want to get rid of those jackets.
Yeah, right.
We appreciate you being here, thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you for the time. Thank you very much.
All right, guys, we can move to our agenda. And before I do, Mr. Smiley wants to make sure I remind everybody via this, whoever may be watching, that we will not be doing trash pickup on Tuesday, obviously, because it's a holiday, but we will be doing the Tuesday pickup on Wednesday, because obviously going from, all the way from Friday to, to Wednesday is quite a while, so we will be picking up on Wednesday. Am I good?
Mayor, before we get into discussing the agenda, and this being a work meeting, I think we all should at least discuss a few things that can, are, I think, purpose of the city, things we're working on right now. Can you tell us or give us a status on what the budget process is going to be going forward, and if we need to, if, and your intention is to call special, some, special call meeting or at least to kick the thing off so where we can kind of wade into our budget process, or, or tell us where we are with that?
As I mentioned at the last board meeting, Alron Beatty, we are going to, the, the department hands are supposed to have turned in their budget information as of today to Mr. Corbin, and I got mine in this morning, so I'm proud. And then they're going to, he's going to put all that together. We're going, we're going to provide a summary to the board that shows where things have changed from last year's budget to this year's budget. That will be going out to the board next week. You think by Thursday, Friday?
Yeah.
Okay, so we will get it to the board. Board will have about a week to take a look at it, and we will schedule a work session for that once we've gotten it to the board and the board's had a chance to look at it and study it, so.
Will it be a special call meeting that will be outside of this format? I'm saying, I don't think an hour, maybe we get it...
It won't be outside of this format.
I mean, only format, but outside this timeframe on a Friday.
Yes, yes. And I don't know how many we need, so we will have...
We may have multiple meetings if we need to do that.
If we need.
Okay. Second thing, talk, um, bring us up speed on the, what you know about the bill grant that we've got our bids in on and where we are with status. I know we can't let a bid because we don't necessarily have the money right now to do what the, but tell us, kind of give us an update on the bill grant.
Um, the bill grant, Cody, would you see if Mr. Williams is around somewhere, just in case I misspeak?
Sure.
The, the bill grant came in with a bid of thirty-three million dollars, which gives it a total of forty-one million dollars approximately.
Is that with water, too, and everything all thrown in?
For the entire project, for the entire project. I am working my best from every angle I can find to either get a change in scope, a change in timing, and additional funding. And until and unless we achieve those things, we can't do the bill grant as it currently sits.
I might do it.
So, that's, Mr. Williams is helping me work through that. I was on the phone with Cindy Hyde-Smith, some representatives from her office the day before yesterday. I have been in contact, I was roughly an hour in contact with Senator Wicker's office. We have contacted people when we were down on the coast, one of the positive reasons to go down to MML, talked to the folks from Neil Schaefer who have contacts with federal highway folks. So, we are working every angle we know to try to achieve either, any, any of those three. Right now, time is important, money's important, and if we can change the scope, then that will also allow us to probably proceed. But at this point in time, less than until we get some relief on any of that, we're going to have to figure out another way to go about it.
The, the thirty-three million is based on the original scope of work outside of what we've added as water and sewer and stormwater infrastructure, correct?
The thirty-three million is to do all, is to do...
What was the original bill grant work?
Yes, it's the original scope. We cannot, we are not allowed to change the scope of the bill grant.
And the original grant was fifteen million?
Eighteen million.
Eighteen million. And that was, that was fifteen million actual grant money and three million from us or I?
Well, it started out at eighteen, and then they came back to us and said, fifty, can you do it with fifteen? And unbeknownst to me, we couldn't do it with fifteen, but we said we could. And once we were wedded to the scope, we were wedded to the scope. They don't let you change that, which is one of the reasons that we're trying to see if there's some relief opportunity there.
And we took a mill tax, and we're using it service debt on, on a, on a bond that was, was about two million, three...
We haven't done that yet, no.
There've been, there've been bonds issued, but there have been expenses incurred, and we've been using that money...
Three hundred thousand, so.
For our match, for the expenses that have been incurred so far.
At some point in time, that probably becomes bond or you attach to the bond.
If, if we can move forward with it, it would roll over to big debt service for bonds.
Okay. Um, um, Mr. Kempin, please.
Yes, sir.
Could you give us a status on the downtown water, where we are? I know it looks like we get, get pretty close to the end, but, but replacement of our downtown water mains and sewer stuff?
Yes, sir. We're, we're nearing completion of Phase One. Phase One is just the Main Street area from City Hall down to Jackson. They've laid all the lines, we're connecting some fire, some fire lines right now, so there's a little bit of work you see. We anticipate testing to occur, it's been occurring this week and probably next week, before we turn everything on and make it hot. At that point, they will then move into the next phase, which is kind of the area behind Sullivan's, the city parking lot back there, the alleyway. There'll be some sewer replacement there. And we are generally following that three-phase approach that was outlined previously, just running slightly ahead of schedule right now. So, it all is going well. We are trying to communicate very proactively with the community, letting them know of, of lane closures, road closures. Of course, there hasn't been as many of those in the last week, week and a half, due to the type of work that's going on. But as we enter into the next phases, you'll see some improvements on maps and things coming out that are a little bit more detailed for the business owners and the traveling public.
Oh, we, is part of this project the inclusion of new fire hydrants?
Yes, sir, in the, in the areas where...
That are more appropriate for the new water, the larger water lines and kind of that?
Where we're, where we're replacing the water lines.
What was our, are you probably, but what, a process, what was the static pressure on the old water line? Are we going to see an increase in the static pressure? Or we're just basically going to have more capacity? Or are those two go hand in hand?
Yeah, I think they go hand in hand, and I don't, I don't know what those numbers are, but if you recall, we did a, a water model very early on, which helped design, drive the design for the downtown project, helped delineate which size lines we needed for, for not only existing but future capacity. So, I think you'll see across the board improvements.
Oh, and this would be a question to you and also maybe Mr. Burnett, after we complete the, because approximately scheduled completion time or estimated completion time would be this fall, what, what timeframe?
No, it's, I believe it's early twenty-twenty-four.
Okay.
February, I believe, if, if I've not recalled. But I'll send you that, that map that shows the schedule of the three phases again, just so you can have that as a reference.
Do we plan after they move off of Main Street to, to put, to go back into those trenches, put some asphalt down? And would we do that before the contractor, the payment contractor leaves town? Or is that something we're going to do?
They're, they're aware of it, and they've, they've given a price for it. So, I understand from Mr. Kempson, they will test those lines to make sure they're completely satisfactory, and then we'll overlay and follow in that base plan.
Pretty good. Mayor, thank you.
All right. Let's move into our agenda, guys. So, this will be our, again, it's Wednesday the fifth, for those who might want to attend the meeting, it's Wednesday the fifth. So, first we'll have a couple of sets of minutes. Mr. Huskerson, those are good for you?
Yes.
Should we consent for those? All right, so we'll plant for those for consent. I have nothing that I'm aware of from the mayor's comments standpoint, although I'm sure we will have something that will come up. Anything that anyone wishes to have on the agenda under comments?
I'm going to mention lemonade day.
Okay, all right. Why don't we put that under there? Lemonade day? Lisa?
Is it July fifteenth?
Excuse me?
July fifteenth.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that way it'll be on the agenda for reference. All right, so public hearings, we've got two. And Mr. McCaskey, Mr. Havill is gone for the weekend, so Mr. McCaskey's going to take over on that.
All right, so the first one is a variance request on behalf of John Granberry, representing Highway Twelve East LLC. It's going to be in the south, southwest corner of Highway Twelve and Spring Street. It's basically going to be for landscaping and sidewalk. They're basically requesting that they be able to retain the street block and see if I'm letting that pay...
Bond?
Oh, yeah, Highway Twelve, because basically MDOT and the city are working on doing a redesign in that intersection, which is, if they build the sidewalk now, they've got to tear it back up whenever they come through and they redo that, that part of the intersection. So, by doing this, that's going to allow them to obtain that temporary street block and see if at once that work has been established with the Department of Transportation and partially the city. They'll then go back within sixty days afterwards, place the sidewalk and the required landscape. Board of Adjustment Appeals, Nancy Lee voted to approve the request.
If you haven't been there, that, that parking lot, which has always been a problem, is getting better, so that's part of it, yes.
It's a hard one to fix.
It is a hard one to fix, yes.
Mr. McCaskey, could you ask, can you explain to us what the redesign of Highway Twelve, Spring Street, what all, that entails?
Let's, let someone who's actually involved in that do it, so...
Well, I mean, I didn't know who to ask, but I mean, I think that's a pertinent question to be asked.
I understand. Mr. Williams, would you be so kind?
So, that is part of the tap grant or the alternative transportation grant that we got for that.
Sidewalk stuff.
The sidewalk stuff is what it falls under, but under that, it's doing the whole intersection, and it's setting up to tie in with the other one. So, you had the linkage project that ran the sidewalk into the amphitheater, so you have that coming on the Hampton side there. Then you also, this is setting up to be able to do a multi-use path down to Lincoln Green that direction on the outside, time the stuff that you have towards Stone. And then also, it's part of the larger piece that's going for Spring Street, where Spring Street would get a road diet, and it would turn out looking like Russell Street is what the plan is. So, this is about four hundred thousand dollars is the money that we got with the LPA project. And so, that money can, pretty much all you can do is just the intersection. And so, what that's doing is taking care of new signaling and then also redoing the sidewalk intersections for that portion of it.
In that busy intersection, you don't have the push-by push thing, or will you? Whereas a pedestrian or a bike can get across it?
They, we actually, and we're actually having to redesign that right now because it's such a bad intersection with how large that is, and how to handle the bike traffic is the number one thing that we're having issues with. And so, we've been around and around, so it's a, it's a tiny project as far as footprint wise, but it's really a keystone project to set this up for. So, when it gets done, it'll have bikes, pedestrians, as well as some changes that are in the regional transportation plan that Neil Schaefer did for MDOT that we're included in. It'll actually be taking some of that into it as well as far as lane changes on that.
Make it a little more pedestrian, bike-friendly, as pedestrian, bike-friendly as that intersection can be.
Exactly, as much as you can. You've still got, you know, a ton of lanes to cross every direction.
A lot of moving parts, I think.
And MSU's tying in with us on this one, as well as the county. So, Jeremiah's been involved as far as trying to see how we can make this as bike-friendly as possible.
Mr. Williams, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Mr. McCaskey. We have the third public hearing for amending the UDC, and that is the, this, again, this is the third one, so that summary is in the packet. Okay, all right, thank you. No items for the mayor, no items for the board. Airport, Mr. Lincoln. Since you've got a number of items here, I think you probably ought to give us just a little bit on them, okay?
Sure. The first one is requirement that the fire code has come up, the national fire code has come out with for us to refuel our trucks on the field. Something happened in California, and someone over built a truck, burned a bunch of stuff down, so now the rest of the nation has to put this in system. Titan, here, after working with them back and forth, they decided to pay for the trucks since we leased the truck for them. We own the tanks, and so we're going to pay our portion for the tanks. And so, this puts us up to the top in the code.
Okay, so consent for that, all right. And then you've got a couple of change orders.
The next one is a change order for the ramp entrances. We got a couple of aircraft over this year with young pilots coming in, large aircraft, charter aircraft, and they ran off into the grass and got stuck, and so we had to work extra hard to get them out. And so, what we do is, if they follow the center line, they've got five foot on either side of clearance, but when they don't follow...
Yeah, follow the center line.
This aircraft's not that wide. It is not a problem. So, anyhow, we have concrete five and, five and eight feet on both sides, so we were able to get this from a painted black, so it all looks normal. And there was a little more concrete, a little more work, because they actually had to hand dig and protect our wires from our runway taxi lines, so excavate our wires and pull them out of the ground. Even though you tell contractors of the wires there, they, they, you know, they won't find them in the fastest way.
Well, let's highlight number three, just so that you'll...
And one thing you want to say about that, those big planes, that, that's the charter aircraft that Mississippi State...
That's right.
...bought in, generally.
That's right.
So it's something that we have a lot of...
Yeah, they love to buy fuel.
We like them a lot.
Lots of fuel.
They have turbine aircraft.
Number three is the terminal building that we have been awarded, softly awarded the $4.5 million. And so to get that grant, we have to have bids turned in. And to get bids turned in, the building has to be fully designed from top to bottom, going through all the city departments and all through the FAA and all through Cary and the other two companies that are working with them, their consultants. And so we're really close now on getting all the designs for this building. So Sue Store's building, what I have now is about 100 square feet. This is 11,000 square foot building.
So, but I didn't want you to highlight that because I think that's a big deal. And it will make us highly competitive as it relates to the SEC towns and agation facilities. So I think that's great.
We have a lot of, yeah, a lot of the teams will go to Triangle. There's no reason for that.
Our group has gone to most of the other large SEC schools. We looked at their terminal buildings, and so we're taking the best of all of those and incorporating the others.
So we've got consent for those. And I don't mean to hold you on the other ones, but I just thought those should be highlighted, so I appreciate it.
The other three are something the FAA come up with that are required for us to get the AIP grant and the bill grant this year. And so you already proved here to be our engineers, so this is just as agreement. And then the other two are projects.
All right, thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you. All right, and community development planning, this is updating our fee and fine schedule. It goes with the UDC changes, so this is part of that. And that'll be one of those things to look at is associated with the UDC changes, so. Okay. Under engineering, Cody, I'm going to let you present a little bit of this. We've got a low bid for mills for the Needmore Community Center, which I think we've all been kind of waiting on to get done. So that came in within a certain percentage of what we anticipated. Is that right?
It's pretty close. I think that Kimley's was around 1.9 million. Our guys, Chris and his team, had it at about 2.2. So we were pretty close to our estimate. And we vetted the contractor, got a good feel about him, so we're ready to proceed.
Okay, all right. Consent for that one?
Consent.
All right, great. Low bids from towns for the north side drainage project on the bond.
Give us a schedule. What you going to do? Let the board know what the, what the scope going to look like when you meet them doing with it?
Yes, sir. So we've got a lot of the channels in fairly good shape as far as the sides, but it's starting to erode. So the intent is to come in and really shape up the areas that have gotten kind of bad and smooth them out. And then provide a 200-pound rip wrap, full blanket on the entire channel. Underlying with that will be an erosion blanket, which will keep the grass and all those things from growing up. So it should stabilize the bank from it getting any larger and really protect the people that are on the north side of the ditch, as well as the south side. Yes, sir.
All right.
Mayor, let me suggest something. On this Needmore, not that it'll be approved or anything, but that's a $2.3 million project. I think that will not be on consent. I think that's just a lot of money. I think there would be some minimal explanation of bids to come in, that kind of stuff. Because we've been forming a proposal, why would we about spend $2.3 million on that money?
Okay, it's removed from consent. Thank you. Advertising for Colonial Hills Drainage?
Yes, ma'am. We're getting close enough.
Okay, all right. Consent for that one? Fire Department, Ms. Malone wishes to, or Chief wishes Ms. Malone to attend emergency seminar or emergency services seminar or conference. Consent for that one? And HR, are these all the two... There you are. The two that we have are refilled positions that are... Okay. All right, consent for those two? And then we have two items of discipline that are being recommended by Chief Ballard and then by Mr. Smiley. So the, consent for that one, for those?
Consent for recommendations.
All right, let's take their recommendations. Parks, we have best quote for moonshot recreation for three replacement drums. That is the, I think the junior auxiliary provided those drums and they've had some damage, so consent for that?
The junior auxiliary or the pilot for the replacement.
Okay, all right, thank you. Under police, we have the chief and Chief Stewart, I say Chief Stewart, to attend the FBI National Academy. Consent for that? The hotspot grant, and that is fully reimbursable, is that right? 100% grant?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And I had to look up, I had to Google what a gray key is. Congratulations.
Okay, now that you've said it, I'm not going to Google it. What's a gray key?
It allows them to retrieve encoded cellphone information.
Okay, all right, good, good. I put you on the spot. I'm so sorry, I say. All right, and then we have Lee Upchurch and Brandon Lovelady to attend the FUSE's customer symposium. Consent for that one, all right? And utilities, Mr. Kemp, you too have a good number of items. Anything in particular we need to highlight here?
The item one is just some change order due to some unforeseen things that were not included in the plans. The other is a creek crossing that needs to be replaced over in the San Pepper neighborhood.
Okay, consent for the two of those?
Yes, I was quick, just quick. On the $211,000, what increased there?
Mostly that was included in, it's on the memo sheet that outlines the different pay items. But I believe it's removal of asphalt, some backfill material, and some additional fittings.
So that one in the original scope of work, or was that just expanded scope of work?
It was not in the original, it was not in the original plans. The quantities were not...
And this still keeps us in the money, pretty close in the money on that.
Well, it's, it'll be an additional charge cost to the project.
We'd estimate 2.5 on that. This put, is that what we estimated on that? And it came in 2.4?
The numbers on the screen. You can hit them afterward.
Thank you so much. There's the, yeah, there's the increases right there. So we're at 2.676.
2.676. And we projected 2.5 or something.
And that doesn't include some of the asphalt was rolled into the streets contract. So there is some additional costs that's not under this contract.
Thank you.
And the third one is the city of Starkville is getting an asset. So we're going to get the North Star Industrial Park water tank. OCDA has approved that. We did that at our last board meeting. So we are now just going to be accepting that asset.
Can I ask one more question about that?
Yes, sir.
Does that tank tie back into our system?
Yes, sir.
First part of our municipal system?
Yes, sir.
Elevation and stuff, elevation, what is it, altitude value, whatever. It's not set up there way higher with the capacity, is it?
It's actually lower.
It is, and lower tanks in town.
It's the same elevation as Bluefield, which is lower than the other four.
Thank you. I'm asking you, just your question. Thank you.
Authorization for the sole source quote from Central Pipe. Consent for that one? Anything about any of the remaining of these that we should know, Mr. Kemp?
No, ma'am.
Okay, lowest quote from Altec. Consent for that? Lowest bids for source of supply, the usual, again, came around sooner than I ever expected. And another lowest quote for High Performance Computing Center? Consent for that one? And then the best quote for gearbox installation at the wastewater treatment plant. Consent for that? All right, we have nothing for executive session, and that takes us through to the end of our agenda. We have a holiday on the 5th, 4th, excuse me. We'll be meeting on the 5th, so I hope everyone has a great weekend. Thank you all. Appreciate it. Happy Fourth.